We've opened our planning board meeting. I will read the agenda for this evening. The agenda is, the first item on the agenda is the official hearings for the 3A, I guess MBTA zoning bylaw, and I will read the official hearing when we are opening that hearing. The other, second item on the agenda is the minutes from December 3rd. And then we're 7:15, opening the hearing. And. Sorry, Heidi, you've got bylaw. Are you referring to the ADU or are you referring to the hearing bylaw? Right. So the hearing is in reference to the MBTA bylaw. We have a presentation. We have some administrative zoning updates. There's some zoning updates pertaining to signage. And we will be discussing the timeline for the warrant for town meeting. And then reports on meetings with other boards and entities. As part of the zoning discussions for this evening. We have as part of the, there's classes of, the now town code 240, 2.4 class of districts. Okay, that's what I thought, but then I got, all right. So, okay, as I had read, we, minutes, hearing, ADU zoning update, administrative zoning update, sign language for zoning updates, warrant timeline, and reports on meetings with other boards and entities. Is there an town planner report? Is our agenda for the evening? Are there any other items not anticipated within 48 hours which should be added to the agenda? Okay, hearing done, I make a motion to accept the agenda as posted. Okay, all in favor? We have a quorum in person, so I believe we can just do. Okay, so we do roll call as one of our planning board members is remote. So Addie Mae Weiss is aye, Frank Hope.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
James Guarino.
Aye.
And Steph Harrison.
Aye.
Okay, so agenda has been accepted. We are three minutes from the opening of the hearing. So. Minutes for December 3rd, has everyone had a chance to review those minutes?
I have.
Does anyone have edits to the December 3rd?
I do.
Okay. Steph, do you have the December 3rd minutes handy, or, not that we don't need to share, but just so that for edit?
I, I, I'm not seeing the December 3rd minutes. I'm seeing the December 10th minutes that were sent by email. I may have missed a file.
Okay, it's correction, minutes from December 10th.
Okay, I do have those handy if we need to pull them up.
I put it at two. All right, Frank, if you're able to share what your.
Yes, I have a couple of things. So the first one is under other present. Bob Murchison was present for that meeting. So we should add his name to the others present. For the minutes of 11:25, it says all in favor, but there was one abstained. Happened to me.
10th still?
Yeah.
Okay.
I only have one other and it's very minor, doesn't necessarily need to be changed. It's just, under the 8pm hearing. Fourth of, third of way down, the first word on the line is, and it says task on hand, it should be task at hand, but it doesn't matter. And that's all I have.
All right, are there any other edits to December 10th? Hearing done, I make a motion to accept the minutes of December 10th as amended. Addie Mae Weiss is aye, make a motion.
Second.
Thanks for the second. Addie Mae Weiss is an aye, Frank Hope.
Aye.
Bob Wolf. James Guarino.
Aye.
And Steph Harrison. Okay. I read the agenda as December 3rd. The minutes were, that we did were December 10th. Do we have minutes from the 3rd? We don't have.
We didn't. There was no meeting. It's just a typo.
Oh, that's right, the 3rd got moved to the 10th. Okay, that was the correction. So there was no meeting on the 3rd. That meeting was changed. Sorry.
On the agenda, it does say 10th.
We're all on the same page. I apologize, everyone. I'm sorry. I'm operating on one ear. I have, we've got swapped cars and I have hearing and batteries on their way, thanks to a neighbor. So be corrected and meantime, bear with me. So. Okay.
The agenda I have says the 3rd. I don't, I think we're administratively okay on this. Heidi, I, the only thing is that I can't hear anything that you're saying. I can tell that you're speaking, but I can't hear what you're saying, just so you're aware.
If I talk this way, can you hear me?
Yes, a little bit. I mean, better, yes.
And also closer to this.
Steph, just because the microphone's here and you were saying you're having trouble hearing. Are you able to hear James or Bob?
Very difficult.
I'm not sure if they've spoken. I have not heard Rob.
Jim, can you speak up?
Hello, Steph, how are you?
Yes, I can hear Rob great.
You hear me, Steph?
Yep.
Sure, you hear me?
Give me two seconds.
Loud, deep voices.
Frank, do you want to open the meeting, the hearing, or I, in one second, I'll be functioning again. I apologize. Okay, sorry. All right, 7:16, we're one minute late, but officially opening the public hearing for the MBTLA, MBL, MBTL, MBTA zoning bylaw. Anyway, so notice of public hearing pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, Sherburne Planning Board is holding a public hearing Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, at 7:15 PM, Town Hall. This is virtual and it's hybrids, so in-person and Zoom. To consider proposed additions and amendments to the Sherburne zoning bylaws and Sherburne zoning map, subject matter changes being proposed for compliance with MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, multi-family zoning requirements for MBTA communities as detailed below. One, add a new section 240-5.7 multi-family overlay district, known as MOD, to the Sherburne zoning bylaws. The proposed bylaw allows multi-family housing as of right in accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, commonly known as the MBTA Communities Law. Two, amend section 240-2.1 classes of districts to include multi-family overlay district and other overlay districts. Three, amend section 240-3.2, Section 26, schedule of use regulations to include, except as otherwise provided in section 240-5.7. Four, amend sections 240-3.2 table of use regulations to include multi-family dwellings and district. Five, amend section 240 attachment 1, schedule of dimensional requirements to include multi-family overlay district. Six, amend section 240-9.1 amendment attachment to Sherburne zoning map, creating a new overlay zoning district called multi-family overlay district, MOD. Complete text of proposed amendment and copy of proposed zoning map on file with the town clerk and has been posted on the planning board's webpage. All interested parties encouraged to attend the hearing or submit written commentary. So, and this meeting is being recorded and will be shared on Dover Sherburne Cable TV in a couple of days. So I'd like to make a motion to officially open the hearing.
So moved.
Hearing's officially opened. All in favor, Addie Mae Weiss, aye. Frank Hope.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
Jim Guarino.
Aye.
And Steph Harrison. Okay, thank you. There, we have a short presentation on what this MBTA zoning bylaw is. And after the presentation, there will be a time for discussion. So I think Steph, are you able to, oh, do we, can we put the, for everyone else to see, it should be broadcast both on the screen.
Anyone who's in the Zoom meeting and not in the room, are you able to see my screen?
I'm sorry, Steph, what was that?
Wait, Steph, a moment.
I'm just, I'm asking, oh, I'm getting a thumbs up, never mind. I got my question answered.
Oh, it is warming up.
Anyone get a chance to look at the information online? Does anyone need a copy of something they want me to run off?
So I'm sharing my screen. If, if, if you guys can see the Zoom screen share, you don't need to have a sep, you may not need to have a separate PowerPoint going in the room.
But everyone in the, in the room can't see the presentation.
Right.
It's supposed to be, there we go. Okay.
So are we to flip slides concurrently then? Is that the intent?
I, it's my understanding when you flip, Steph, what, what being projected right now is the Zoom screen.
Perfect. Okay.
So we are all on the same page. We're kind of finally getting somewhere technology-wise, so it's a good thing. Okay, so we can go ahead to the first screen. I think this is fairly straightforward.
Changed, all right.
Okay, thanks, Steph. So, and everyone, Steph Harrison is our fifth planning board member and our tech guru and is working remotely because it is still a little bit easier to manage multiple screens. She's got multiple screens at home. So thank you, Steph, for doing this and for helping us keep on track. All right, so what is the MBTA multi-family? A lot of us have been hearing that there's the housing crisis across the state for a number of years, since the 1970s. We've been told we need to increase the number of affordable housing, increase the number of housing units in general in order to kind of allow for more naturally affordable housing. So in 2021, the state law, the state created the law of MBTA communities, Act 3A, to address housing shortage. The law required new zoning districts. This is different than some other state actions for, related to trying to address housing in that it's a zoning bylaw requirement. It's not a requirement for a particular development or doesn't talk about any one development. It just requires a zoning district for new multi-family housing with access to public transit, the goal being public transit. So requirements depend on the town location and the size. So there are three classifications. Towns with commuter rails are first classification. Then there's adjacent large towns, towns that are large and next to a town with a commuter rail. And then there's adjacent small towns. Sherburne is classified as an adjacent small town because we are a small town next to a town with a commuter rail. And our compliance deadline is December of 2025. So we need to have our zoning bylaw approved by town meeting prior to December 2025. The next slide further clarifies this and shows the number of communities throughout the state. Nice illustration here to show that there's a large number of communities which have already passed compliance. We've been hearing a lot in the news of towns that have not complied, and there's really few that have not complied. They just, like everything, you hear about the bad stuff on the news. The good stuff doesn't always make the news. So there are 12 communities that are rapid transit communities, which their deadline was December 2023. And they were the first to be required to comply because they have a commuter rail in their town. And then the adjacent communities, the larger ones. There are 130 communities, and out of those 130 communities, there's only one that's not in compliance at the moment. They have until the end of this month to come into compliance. And then we have where Sherburne Falls, which is a small adjacent community, there are 35 of those small adjacent communities. And the deadline for that is December 31st, 2025. So how have we handled trying to work with the state mandate? And we've been working on this since this came out in 2023, or I'm sorry, in 2021. We have been kind of as a planning board, talking about it and working on it. We have submitted the approved action plan from EOHLC in 2023. We have a proposed area for compliance that was determined in fall of 2024. The preapproval application was also submitted to EOHLC. Draft bylaw has gone to the Attorney General's Office in fall of 2024. And today is a mandatory public hearing. And the next step, there will be the usual town meeting. We warrant article meetings, but the next big step is town meeting approval in spring of 2025. And the full application after that approval goes to EOHLC. And then the bylaw goes to Attorney Generals. And then ideally, we are in compliance. So we're halfway through that road. The outreach to date on how we've approached this, the next slide, Steph, thank you. So there was an initial proposal that was presented in 2023. There were facts and information shared. We had an information session, which was pretty broad. In January 25th of 2024, public hearing was in February of 2024. The town administrator had some office hours. We had some information distributed at last town meeting in spring 2024. Public workshop was in June of 2024 with a technical consultant that we brought on to reevaluate some previous ideas and determined there were some kind of first drafts that there were some changes that the state made after that draft had been submitted. And so we needed to change what we were looking at. A community survey was sent around townwide in August 2024. Public meeting, August 13th, council on aging sessions, and today's hearing. And as the next slide shows, there was an initial concept which looked at using spaces in our town center for zoning, to be zoned. As that is something that's always been discussed in our master plan. We looked at town center and after those, while those parcels are potentially nice for multi-family under Sherburne bylaw, potentially it's something to be discussed at a future, they would not comply with the way the 3A zoning bylaw was written. And therefore, we had to take a second look. There were restrictions on how spaces could be calculated and what would mixed-use development and how that would work. And in a town center, it was felt when we met in June and August at our workshop that town center was an area where mixed-use development was something of interest. So there was a lot of opportunity for input and discussion. Again, the community-wide survey was sent out. And we had 164 responses. Everyone who responded said that they were a town resident. And using that guidance, the proposed area for compliance was determined for, was selected. And this area selected is across from an existing elderly affordable zone, zoned area. It's up on the border with Framingham. It's up on Kendall Avenue and it is privately owned parcel. No, I'm talking about Sherburne Meadows next to Sunshine Dairy.
Yes, that's not elderly affordable. Those are unique condos.
They're condos. They're not affordable. I agree. But our zoning designation for that land, when that was built, to allow that to be four units per acre, to be a greater density than our regular zoning, there's a zone that we have in our town called EA. EA stands for elderly affordable. So it's only, it allows for properties to be four units per acre for development. It allows them to be elderly or affordable, does not require them to be affordable. Abbey Road is EA. Abbey Road is privately owned. There are no affordable units, but it, the zone, it's just like we have residence A, residence B, residence C, depending on one acre, two acre, three acre, we have also a zone category, classification called EA. And so it's EA. Right now, we have three. We have Abbey Road, part four, Abbey Road, Woodhaven, Leland. The end of Coolidge is, there's a parcel there at 108, or 104. Anyway, end of Coolidge, there's a parcel that's zoned EA that was at 2017 town meeting.
So the tax is elderly and affordable also, or does the town tax on this rate?
We only have one tax rate?
We have one tax rate across the board. We don't have a, it's the same tax rate for everyone, whether you're EA, private, residence, commercial, it's all one tax rate. So same tax rate. It's just, it, the only distinction is, is really the unit per acre. That's the only distinction that our zoning allows that are really defined. So residence A is one unit per acre, residence B is two per acre, is one, is one unit per two acres. Residence C is one unit per three acre. EA is four, up to four units per acre. What's that?
No, there's 24 units.
There's 24 units, but one unit per acre.
It's, it's, there's a different calculus. Okay.
All right, we're digging into the weeds, but I'm going to go on to the next slide, which is.
So.
Some of us live in those weeds, so.
Sorry.
Can we just go through the presentation and then maybe come back for questions?
I promise we'll have time for questions.
It's owned in a trust. Can we get, we'll get into that.
Yes.
But one thing I want to say is that, that the one time I know was part of the initial proposal as well, that didn't come chest.
Right, so Frank has offered a good clarification. So this parcel that we are kind of selecting and we're offering up, it was part of the initial, I guess, last January proposal where we also had town center, but then we learned some, when we had a technical consultant assist us, we learned why some of the town center properties were not good for 3A, might be good as a future discussion for other housing discussion, but not 3A. And the parcel at the end of Kendall, which is shown on this map displayed, it was part of the initial discussion and and it meets all the requirements. So. And we'll go through what those requirements are, but just real quickly, the.
Steph's raising.
Steph, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. I know you're trying to get through the presentation, but I really dislike this hybrid format not being in the room. Can you please share who was speaking in questioning about the EA development? I just don't, I can't see anyone in the room or tell who's speaking.
I am Barbara Maye. I did bring up the, the question about where it was, et cetera.
Okay, Addie Mae, do you mind following the format, please, where any speaker has to be first acknowledged by the chair and then has to state their name and affiliation?
It'll help us with minutes and it'll, it's, it'll, I know it's a little, we're still learning how to do remote and in-person, so it's, apologies for the confusion.
So just name an address if I can get the record.
My address is 43 Kendall.
So Steph, were you able to hear that?
Well enough, thank you.
All right, so Steph.
Question about how many owners was asked by me, Michael Newman, 16, Basin Hill Lane.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I think we can jump to the consequences slide.
We're looking at only six acre portion of the slide.
Right, I know we, did we not?
It's on the, it's written on the top of the slide.
Okay. Well. Like many things, we've been digging into the weeds on this for so long, and I thought this information was in the slide, but it's not. But what we're looking at is, the whole parcel is, I believe, 21 acres. But what the state zoning bylaw, the 3A zoning bylaw requirements are, is that for Sherburne, because we are a small adjacent community, we are required to allow for a parcel up to six, a six acre parcel. Or it's five point something acres, but we're rounding up to six acres for consistency sake. And allows for up to 78 units, or it's 15 units per acre, which comes out to 78, but the but is, is that local, 3A, unlike 40B, local zoning, local bylaws apply. So Board of Health, our local Board of Health applies. What we have for local infrastructure applies. So right now, with our local infrastructure, we all know 15 units per acre is not possible. So the language is a byright, it's a zoning, it's not a project in front of us. It simply says, this is a use that is allowed, same way that we have in our business district. We say that this is our district, this is where we allow businesses, this is where we allow our restaurants and that type of an operation. Just because we allow it doesn't mean it's feasible because of the limitations of our infrastructure. So that is how zoning operates. And all the state is saying is we are requiring every town to come up with a, an overlay of a certain, and say, this part of town is where we would allow it, if it supports, if it's possible, all other things being equal, and your local bylaws do apply. This is a, it's byright. But it would go, if a project was proposed, which it's not, there is a requirement that any parcel selected be on private land. Towns are not allowed to use. Towns are not allowed to use town land for these three A designations. So every town throughout the Commonwealth that's subject to this is selecting privately owned land. For their overlay zoning by law just um and. I'm sure there'll be more questions on that and then we can maybe add any clarifications there. But as you've all heard in the news, the consequences for not complying by the deadline are. Cuts in local aid, state funding cuts, um mass works grants. Steph, if you want to just let go ahead and move to the consequence slide. Um, Mass Works Grant is the one that provided a great deal of funding for our roundabout that recently was implemented. Complete Streets grants would be cut, we've used Complete Streets to assist with sidewalk improvement. Um, and then there's legal threats, we certainly have enough of that. And the example is the town of Milton, which we've all heard much about in the news. That's lost access to thirteen grant programs and is in a lawsuit with the Attorney General. As a refresher reminder, at Springtown Meeting, the next slide, Steph, thank you. The yes vote does not require units to be built, it's only creating a zoning overlay. And as I mentioned, it's a zoning overlay, it's zoned, the parcel is zoned. And the wording of the by law is up to six acres. So even though the whole parcel is twenty one acres, only up to six acres would be a by right multifamily. So we hope that by the time we get to April, everyone feels comfortable supporting this multifamily overlay district. And other than having kind of further slides that talk about the survey and how people responded. That's the end of the official presentation. And I'm first going to ask planning board members if there's anything that comes to mind that we should. Make sure we say and then open it up to questions.
I want I want to point out that we looked at eight sites altogether and then narrowed it down to this particular site. That was part of the last public hearing and then and then a survey that followed that.
Any other? Comments again, and we, this is like second nature to us, but I'm sure there's things that we've left out. Who wasn't you made?
Steph.
Steph, please.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add, you started to say this, but I don't think you finished the thought, Addie May, that al- although this zoning would allow. Would allow for higher density, that um this requirement is not like forty B. I don't even, I think we shouldn't even really be comparing it to forty B at all. I only bring it up because I want to be clear that it does not circumvent. Local control and local regulations the way that forty B does. So this would require, um, other than density, this would require the normal processes for development.
Okay, I'm gonna start on the left in the back. And again, if you'll just for clarity with following open meeting law procedures, name and address, please.
Uh, I'm Dan Wolf, I'm at Two Lake Street. And I got most of the questions I think you've answered, so I I thank you and I thank all of you for working really, really hard on this. Um, is I know it's water under the bridge, but could the apartments that are going into Coolidge? Have been used as part of this area for housing for those for i- in a private area. We're gonna have all those apartments anyhow.
So the area that was voted at town meeting. To be EA could not. Because you cannot have an age restriction on a property that you're zoning for three A. The parcel that was um a, that the comprehensive permit. For the apartments that was approved. I believe it potentially could, but it was complicated. It wasn't the support of the landowner for that. And. We found that we were better served as a town at this stage, the way the three A zoning by law was written. To select only one parcel. If we selected more than one parcel, then there were some of the kind of options that we had to. Control or guide were eliminated. So by only by keeping it to one parcel, we have more options at a town to kind of control.
And that.
So I I noted, uh, I think last week that Weston decided not to comply. Um, in their in their town meeting. And I'm I'm wondering if if there's some kind of result that we get from the Milton lawsuit or some from Weston or something else. That may change things a little bit, will we be able to make any adjustments? Based on whether that's good or bad, it's probably not gonna come out to the warrant at the town meeting.
You know, bylaws can always be, you can always go to town meeting with a new by law and go to try and pass it. And then it goes to the Attorney General and it's not accepted as a by law until the attorney attorney general approves it. So I mean, everything to a degree is always up for change and flexible. Laws can be amended um at this rate where we're going. We've had quite a bit of feedback from the state Attorney General's Office and the um Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And we've got, we're we're fairly, I guess. Because of our census data, we fall into the small adjacent community. The town of Holliston has a much bigger requirement. Um, and we're about five hundred people. That's different is this spread that shifts us into that larger community as far as a census population, so um. And I, go ahead, hi.
Yeah, so one of the things is you asked about what parcel would, whether we could use Cool Coolidge. And of the eight parcels, that was one of the ones that was looked at as well as South Wheel, which were all existing growth. When we did the survey, the survey came out that people felt if we were gonna do this, it should be something that could actually be done. And and different, like the Coolidge one, you couldn't convert forty B over to a three A that way. And that was going to be a forty B project, so it wouldn't really meet the spirit of what. And and so we were following what the majority came through on the town survey saying this was gonna be done. Closest to the transportation option for water or sewer, this was a small parcel. The trust at that time, the representatives, even though the the trust is composed of a a large group of people. The majority were saying that they were okay with adding this layer on, they still keep their existing layer, they do not have to do anything. And it only allows a portion of their twenty one acres to be put under this overlay zone, so.
Let me just, one one last clarification and then that's that's just for everybody as well and why that uh particular parcel was chosen. Uh, versus all of the other aid was also as proximity to the MBTA. The reason why this is an MBTA is so that uh people can quickly and easily get on to MBTA. And go to work in Worcester, Boston, or wherever else jobs were. So they want this uh overlay district to be as close as possible to uh some kind of a uh transportation hub.
Thank you, Phil Felsen for my last question. The first is two part, the first one is if this goes in and as you said, it's to provide to be able to get to the MBTA for for more people. Number one, do we have any responsibility to be to have to provide any kind of transportation to, let's say, West Natick or Natick? The other question is if we add all those people and we expect them to be using their cars, let's say to go to West Natick Station. Is the MBTA doing anything to provide additional parking spaces? So that everybody can use that station uh who wants to?
Fair question, but as you probably already know, it's unknown. I mean, it's like many things that it's it's for the same questions that we've been all asking ever since the nineteen sixty nine forty B law was. Put out, these things are going to be a long time before we see where this ends up. Economic factors have a huge play role to play. I mean, we saw that as a town in two thousand eight to two thousand fourteen, there was very little, you know, forty B activity. Because the economics just didn't make sense for housing construction at that time. So it's a, it's a state mandate, it's a, it's a law. We're doing our best to comply, all the other parts that go along with it, every, you know, you saw the map. It, we're not in an, we're not an island in the middle of an ocean. We are surrounded by other communities that are working through this process also. And as a Commonwealth, hopefully we will make some improvements such as better public transportation. But we're not there now and it's not our responsibility now.
Thanks again for all your work.
Yeah, and one other clarification I want to make on your comment about whether this can be changed, like a town meeting. The only concern I'd have with the change, if you try to change the district at town meeting. We do run a risk that it may not pass the test with this EO HLC, which is Executive Office Housing and Livable Communities. That there's a two process, they have to approve that this meets the three A and the Attorney General meets our actual. Legal language of the by law, where that might be okay, the legal language, but we might not get the housing density approved, so.
The only reason I brought that up is if for some reason Milton and Weston won their case. And and it said, well, no, you know, this this isn't done right and you don't have to do this. We can make those adjustments if we want to at town meeting, not do it all.
Right, changing the zone or letting us move the Coolidge would be a different question.
Are you talking about amending an article or are you talking about just not voting for it?
Right.
Yes, Eric, please.
Eric Johnson, twenty snow street. Um, so you mentioned the fifteen units per acre. Are there any further restrictions on that such as um rentals, homeownership? Um, can it or can be anything from single family dwelling to apartment building? You know what I mean, is there any further restrictions or is this fifteen uh fifteen units per acre building as you see fit?
There are no further restrictions at this moment, it's just that it's allowing for, I mean, it's encouraging. Basically, most towns have a preference for, it's it's kind of the zoning conundrum has been. Single family home is the kind of dominant zoning throughout most communities in the Commonwealth. And so the state is trying to encourage multifamily under the guise or under the assumption, and it's a practical one, that the economics of. More housing, more supply would allow for na- more naturally affordable housing and more. We have lots of young people who would like to have homes in our communities and aren't able to throughout the Commonwealth. So um they have not specified. Uh, other than you cannot restrict, put an age restriction.
Yeah, you can have an age or or um, but you allow you put a little bit of um affordable ten percent or something like that, so you don't lose.
Right, that's right, right. At the beginning, the state was going to say no um affordability requirement allowed. And they did with a lot of pushback from towns because we are all also required to as a community have ten percent affordable. Many towns said, wait, that doesn't make sense, we're working on the forty B challenges and we're trying to. So the state has allowed up to ten percent affordable, which in our zoning, our by law that we have. Presented and is on the town, the la- the the language of the by law for that we are putting forth, which will be a warrant article. Going to town meeting that is on the town website. And we do have a um ten percent affordable requirement for any development under that three A zoning.
So I do want to stick that until I answer my one A question is um. So can we restrict certain things like aesthetics or anything architectural style? Something that concerns me is that makes whatever it is, what's uh six times fifteen, seventy five, something like that. It almost pushes it toward apartments per se, you know what I mean? So and I know there's like Framingham Water and Sewer there, right at the edge of the town there. Is there a way that you can at least make it have some control of aesthetics of that? You know what I'm trying to say, or the arc has some architectural control over what they build? Maybe you can't say, okay, you gotta be townhouses, you gotta be whatever. Uh, but it's probably gonna push toward a certain apartments and uh be nice to actually have, like I said, some architectural control.
We do have architecture control under this in the sense that the zoning by law doesn't have it. But we, it does again, each, any project that comes under this three A zoning by law, if we pass this at town meeting. Would go to the various town in front of town boards. So we would have like any review process, there would be an opportunity to see. There'd be hearings and discussions and the project that was being proposed for development would go in front of the boards and. People have input. Um, I don't, if I'm, it's my understanding, we wouldn't put it in.
I think what you're saying is it would be an open space subdivision. We have the exact same control we have of open space subdivisions right now.
Site plan review, if not special purpose, so by say site plan review per se? So you can throw something down, essentially you can vote something down based on the architecture.
Yeah, you're just stuck with two and a half stories on our, like, so you're not gonna have a big apartment building. But it's multifamily is what it's called, they're looking for.
We still put height control on it.
We do have the height control, the thirty five foot height control.
Okay, that's.
That is in place, cause it's under our local zone, yeah, correct. Yes, please state your name and address.
Rettwildwood, uh, forty three Kendall Avenue, across the street from seven, six acres. Uh, my real question is the other fifteen acres in that parcel, is it gonna remain zoned as it is now? Or is there gonna be a different zoning for that also?
It's, is it, so the the underlying zoning remains intact. It's uh an overlay has then allows for multiple uses, so the use, the primary use is the zone, the residence, it's residence. Um, C or, but it currently now. Residence C, so it's two acre zoning. Is it A?
Yep.
Okay, so residence A, it's in a, it's one acre. At the moment, the underlying, the existing zoning on that property, there's twenty one acres right now. You know, barring whatever infrastructure or whatever, right now it could be subdivided into um. Twenty one house lots potentially because of it's in a residence A, which is one acre per. One house per acre zoning, so that is, that still is under the underlying zoning. Does that answer your question? And if you'll, go ahead and your name again, I'm sorry.
My name is Barbara Maye, and I'm forty three Kendall.
Thank you.
And the concern, what makes you concerned is can, we have a traffic road that is horrendous. I happen to be facing the road. We have trucks and we have motorcycles and we have scooters and we have police sitting in our driveway catching them. That's how bad it is, and we had accidents and accidents. And I do not, I wonder when considering this piece of land. If there was an evaluation of how the exit to these condominium apartment buildings or whatever they may end up being. Coming out onto Kendall, creating another hazard, because it would have to have an in and out.
Right.
And then you'd have apartment buildings with more cars. So I can understand using property, but I cannot understand it being kind of wishy washy. Whether it's an apartment building or homes. If we had eight homes in there that were too family, the worst that can happen is sixteen cars. But when you're talking seventy five units, you're talking double it, a hundred fifty cars potentially. So I I honestly uh wanted to find out why this particular lot with the havoc of the bomb next door, the ice cream stand. The traffic zone, the drugs down the street, why you would pick a a piece of parcel that is already a hazard to the. To the town and to the people that live on that street.
Well, we don't know what would be developed, it could be twenty years or more before that land's ever developed, in which case we could have.
I've lived this life of real estate.
We don't know and when, if that property, if it gets zoned for multifamily purposes or by right option as an overlay. It's it's one more option that the family that hopes that property has, just like they have the option to work with the developer to do a forty B. Either way, whatever anyone chooses to do with their own property, a property, a a development plan would.
Has the right to take the road, he can do what he wants with the property, but he needs approval from the town, but the roads against property.
Right, and so any project would come before the various boards and traffic. Right, and so any project would come before the various boards and traffic states.
Which would come into play to judge whether the traffic area is going to be increased because he's making a profit. Right now, you're looking, and, and I, this is not an insult, this is to say to you, you know, that's your job. You're looking for a place to satisfy the state and you have very little choices. And so this became the choice, but the choice is not necessarily a good choice for the town. Because the operational point of that, that road, you either have to make it a one-way road so that we don't have these trucks going, something's going to happen in that section.
If there's a.
So, so when the development, when the development should happen and that proposal happens and we see what that is, then that could be addressed. And in the meantime, there could be some role studies that will also be and can be taken in advance. Right now, this is just an overlay district, so all it gets is permitting. There is no development, nobody's saying that it's going to be an apartment complex, what it is. We just have to be able to provide someplace in Sherburne that is, you know, within two miles, and this is a little bit beyond the two miles, but it's the closest we have to an MBTA facility for people to be able to use the MBTA facilities. And so in looking at all the potential regions that we can choose from, this ends up being the best region. That doesn't mean that there is a development happening. And whether that ends up happening tomorrow or next year, we would still go through all the regulatory processes and the permitting processes of evaluating that, uh, development to see how everything remains safe, that it meets all the permitted aspects of our bylaws, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Once it's in motion, sir, and I've lived in Preston, in Preston and in Leyland, I have lived it, in Concord and Southern, I have lived it.
There, there's been any, there's been an overlay district like this in those places.
There's always that situation where there was nothing else we could do to let it go that way. So all I'm saying to you is that this particular parcel may, you know, it's great because it's there, but it is not in, in the evaluation process, it is not the best alternative for the town of Sherburne and the traffic that goes through. And it's not even the best alternative, the native offering here if you exit out the other way. So I, I don't, I don't know why, what the other eight were.
Yeah, can I, can I add to that too?
Nice to know what they were.
Yeah, so, so we, so we had a consultant help us looking at Sherburne as a whole and looked at eligible sites that would fit the criteria. And, you know, looking at other exclusions such as wetlands. Well, those eight were whittled down to, I, I would say really this site because of its proximity to the MBTA stations and possible water sewer district. And it seemed to fit, fit the spirit of the three A.
The MBTA station is not a driving two miles, you drive two miles and a quarter.
Right, but we looked at the other sites. So for instance, we looked at houses, or, or, we looked at parcels that already had forty B developments on them, whether those could be expanded or part of it. You know, it could be expanded in another phase and that wasn't, wasn't possible. The density that were on those sites, um, didn't really allow for it. We're, we're, we're looking for.
Do you think this was densing here? This is not densing with the ice cream place and all the traffic and in the water, we have water in this area. I mean, this is, and right up the street, you know, a bunch of, right on top of the line.
It's a better location.
A moment, I'd like to circle this back because we don't have a pro, a project in front of us. And the, and who knows what the, the, the bylaw, the owners of that property under the bylaw, if it was passed, it could be six units. It could be, there is no requirement that it, that how it gets developed. It's just, it's by right up to, and anything would be reviewed under local and, and any, the state requiring throughout town, we will have a census increase, we will have to increase development. And all of the traffic is going to, we are a, a town that is in the middle connected to a bunch of other towns and the traffic will go out through either up sixteen, out twenty-seven, out Kendall. It, it, no matter where, what we are facing with the development increase mandated by the state under various, under three A, under forty B, under everything, whether it's there or it's in the town center, it's the same number of cars that have to exit out. So at, at some point, we, it's something that in a town, we will be dealing with traffic and mitigating.
Go up Sherburne Kendall right now and see how, when you go up Sher, I mean, Kendall right now, up.
Okay.
To the ice cream and you tell me that you can see that entire road. It is windy, it is blind. And you're asking, because having more traffic, we're driving out of the road, out of our building and we can barely see what's going on ten feet ahead of us. So I, I can't, and I, I don't even want to say too much because you'll probably say, who's that pain in the neck at the heart?
Lady who lives in the.
My, my thought is, is that you have to consider.
I think that exists because of water supply and sewer supply.
You say you don't know what's going to go there. I know you don't know what's going to go there, but you have to consider it could be this, it could be that, it could be. So that's, and we have to know in voting, should we vote with you, say, yeah, this is the best? Or should we say no, and then where do you go? You have to be prepared both ways. So all I'm saying in the situation is that in my mind, you're creating havoc on that area without either widening, you know, widening, which requires more money for the town, getting more costs, that requires more, I mean, there's a whole spectrum of costs here that, you know, this is, to me, this is not the best possible. And I don't care how far they have to run, because you can put it on over here and you can get the train to halt. I mean.
I'd like to hear a few other comments from the audience.
I don't, I don't think you have much to worry about because if it does happen.
Please state your name and.
Compared to what you're going to see, once that cooling set of apartments is, is finished, it's going to add a lot more traffic and you won't have to worry about this little bit.
Please remember to state your name and, uh, address when and.
All right, in the red sweater, please.
Judith Kendall, Rockville, sixty-three Lake Street, Sherburne. I've attended these planning meetings. I also attended a meeting in Holliston where we were invited. I think I was the only Sherburne resident that was there to hear more in detail about the MBTA community's law. And every community is finding issues. And I don't want to bore people here tonight with the two and a half hours I sat and listened to the people in Holliston. But I responded to the survey and my only question about these two parcels, since I was born and brought up in this town, was whether the Douses agreed to this. And I, because it's a Douses trust.
Nope, there's only one parcel.
Isn't it on the Douses property?
The Gagans.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, I meant the Gagans. I meant the Gagans. All I wanted to know is, are the Gagans in support of this?
They have put in an email to me that they would support, they're not, they said they would not oppose this.
Unless they didn't get it right.
I, I don't know, and they said that, you know, they represent a trust. They said not all the trust is in favor, but the majority of them have said that this is something that.
Because I do think that that's important because this private property.
Right, well.
And so I think it would be when we go to the public hearing to approve this warrant, for me personally, if the Gagan trust did not support this, then I couldn't support.
I did have two meetings with them because I wanted to make sure they were aware of it, knew what we were talking about. They, I said, would you send them something to me just so that you know that you are okay with it? She says, yes, we don't oppose this.
So I think it would be prudent for some representative of that trust to be at the public hearing. Because I appreciate, Heidi, what you're saying.
Yeah.
I do, that you've got something in writing, but it's an email. I mean, for me personally, I, I would like to see something more official and have somebody speak to the fact that they support it.
It would be ideal, but I think they know that they are not going to be favored by everyone in the community. It's very difficult to ask someone to come up when you're going to have people that oppose what they may be wanting to do. So I'm, I'm not going to ask them to come and do this. I, I just kind of feel like it'd be nice, but.
So when you're referring to a public hearing, are you referring to this meeting today or?
No, we go to the town meeting.
Town meeting.
The town meeting.
I think Heidi has a great point. If I was a property owner, I would stand up here and get the hatred of people who don't want your project. I think so.
I think that's very awkward to ask someone. I would think we, I mean, I can mention that someone brought it up to them, I'm happy to do that, but I'm not going to go and ask, would you, would you stand up?
Without their support, I, I don't know that I could support.
So, so, so what you're asking for is this, is it possible for there to be some more official declaration of the disposition of the ownership that would, and, and that's something maybe even.
I mean, we've gotten in writing and there are a number of families in that trust. At the end of the day, it is their property.
Right.
Even if we put the overlay on it, all it does is it adds an option for them to choose to act on or not.
And then, then this was a big discussion going into the survey as well. So there was one of the survey questions and was weighted fairly heavily.
It doesn't change, we would never, the town, it gives you, the town has no authority to, it, it, the only person that could ever talk to a developer about developing that land is the landowner.
Right.
Is them. And they, again, because some people may not be happy if, about them ever choosing to do anything more than what exists now, which is open space. That they, they're not, and there's about nine involved in that trust and it's getting everybody unanimous. It's a, it's a sensitive topic and they put it in writing that they don't oppose. And some of them are actually supportive, but you know, they're family and we certainly don't want to cause strife within a family. And again, they would not be able to do anything with that property unless they decided to do it. So we do have their support. It was the benefit of this property that we felt comfortable with coming to town and saying, this is a good location to meet the compliance requirements that the state has for us. And what we are trying to do is meet the state compliance. Um, that's, yes.
Michael Newman, sixteen Basin Hill Lane. It, it's become clear that there's a, a single parcel involved. It's also, uh, become, I believe, clear that you've chosen to find the minimum possible area to comply. And a, as opposed to selecting a larger area, uh, to a single property owner, this, uh, overlay is essentially a benefit. Uh, to them, it dramatically increases the value of their property. So I would like to understand why such a small area is chosen, especially with the comments that we're on the borderline of needing to choose a larger one uh, in, in the next census, uh, because it would be in a larger community across this. Why, why wouldn't we be a little more foresighted and, uh, select a larger, uh, overlay district where a single landlord wasn't a beneficiary of this, uh, action?
Part of the reason is because of the nature of it being a state mandate and a state bylaw and there being fluctuations. Um, we did have a number of, of landowners in our town center who did express a desire to have their land zoned potentially as multifamily. And we had a lot of discussions over several meetings about how there could be benefits for having multi-use, um, have, uh, the ability for some homes in town center that maybe could be divided into two homes and maybe allow for, um, shared space. And, and there were a lot of discussions and then we learned that the MBTA, the way that zoning bylaw was written, that would not be allowed. The type of multi-use would not be allowed, which brought then as a town, I think we do think that as a town, there are areas where we should look at are there areas where multifamily, but we can do it under our own town multifamily zoning and we should have those discussions, not under the state's mandates. Then we have more ability to say how that multifamily looks and how it works in our town. And so because of the various, um, you know, requirements that were with three A, we're keeping it simple to get into compliance. And as a community, we do have to continue having the conversation on how do we expand housing options in our town? And how do we provide opportunities for aging in place? And are young people to be able to come back and live in town? And so I think we've got multiple conversations happening. But for the state MBTA, because there was so much fluctuation and because there are so many penalties for not coming into compliance, we kept it small to try and keep it streamlined and simple in order to hopefully have the support at town meeting to get it passed. It's been reviewed twice by the Attorney General's Office. The first round did not pass muster, this round has passed mustard. It was reviewed twice by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and this round of the bylaw language has passed. And we are trying to move forward.
We have some.
I think you hear my greatest comfort with a single property owner getting this big benefit.
And you hear that there's some concern with a single property owner is bearing the burden. So it's all up to interpretation.
We have voted on it.
Nolan Carew on, um, online is.
Okay. Apologies, um, Nolan, if you'll.
No problem, thank you. Nolan Carew, twenty-one Ivy Lane. I was just curious, um, I'm new to this town, so please correct me if this is not feasible. But since there are concerns about the use of this land, um, is there a way that we would be able to co-admit another bylaw that's in line with the wants of the town that limits the use of this three A area? Since the three A area is subject to Sherburne's additional bylaws. So is there a, in the survey that you did, is there a result from it that would suggest as long as we keep it to single level or two level, less than twenty-four units? And that's a bylaw we could pass in tandem to kind of alleviate the concerns of the seventy-five unit complex?
We're not allowed to, we would be, we would be not in compliance and the state, that we, we would have a lawsuit from the Attorney General's Office if we attempted that. Right now, our, I mean, we have some guidelines in review and obviously any project down the road that would come up, there would be reviewed by our safety, the police, fire, Public Works, um, Planning Conservation Board of Health. Everyone would have their review and all of those town bylaws that we have already in place do shape things. But, um, to do something as blatant as that suggestion would, would definitely be, would put us out of compliance. Yes, Steve?
Scotty, thirty-third North Main Street. Um, I think I know the answer, I've got a couple of questions. Um, will this bylaw impact in any way the existing multifamily homes that are in town?
No.
No. Um, and given that, that the proposed area is, is adjacent to Frampton, you know, made it, do those towns have a say in what we can, cannot do with passing this bylaw?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
No. Any other questions or comments to the board?
They do make it, what those towns do in terms of the water and sewer district, make it practical or impractical to actually develop that.
Right.
Parcel in that manner, but.
From a traffic standpoint, any other standpoint, like someone brought up police, fire and all that, um, do they have a say in this? No.
We don't have a say in what they put right on the line either.
Yeah, I can, I can see that, yeah.
Are there any other questions?
Just so that there's been a lot of effort and time put in. We've tried to listen to people, there's been several meetings held over months here. Um, I know to Nolan's point, we've tried to look at different ways. And the whole thing we're trying to say is, how can we be compliant to the state? What is a way to try and work with something in the town? And we're not going to please everyone, but we're. What is a way to try and work with something in the town? And we're not going to please everyone, but we're trying to come up with something.
If you don't have to build it. You just want to become compliant.
Right.
Why does it matter what parcel you take?
Because.
You have eight. What difference does it make if it's near the subway, near the train, near the water? I mean. Reality is, is you're not really saying that it'll never be built when you use that and it will be built.
No, we don't say that, but, but we have a lot of traffic complaints all over town in all different areas. Everyone says there's too much traffic in my town. I hear it from. Western, I hear it from Washington Street. It's like, no one wants, no one wants us in their backyard. Room twenty-seven.
Okay, his lights. It has a stop and go. Kendall doesn't, and it's windy now. Twenty-seven is windy.
Public.
Reality is reality. You can't make it less than it is.
No.
Or more than it is. All I'm saying to you is if you don't have it built. And you just have to come under the jurisdiction of the zoning to comply with all this lawsuit situation or whatever it is. Then why not pick a parcel that is somewhere in the town that you can call the same thing if, if, if it doesn't matter if it's built or not.
Well, the selection of the parcel does have restrictions on, and we've complied with those restrictions.
They have told somebody in our building that they want a certain price. If they don't get the price, they're not going to sell the parcel. Now that, you know, so, and, and this could be true, but my point is, is that if they have that, why not just? Give them what they want and get it, you know, get it passed that way. And then later on in life, make a decision if you want to build something. But, you know, to me, it's ridiculous to take an area that's already congested and make it worse. It really is. And they're all, I know there's a lot of areas.
I guess we just heard from other people that had a different.
Yeah, but they have a different viewpoint because they're not moving across the street.
Um, Frank Hess has a hand raised. Frank, if you'd like to speak, please.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say that as far as traffic is concerned, that, uh, I believe that the MWR TA already goes to the Kendall Ave condos. So they could also service, uh, this new development if it were to go into place. Did that come through?
You did, Frank. We heard you. Thank you.
Yep.
They'll take you to the commuter rail as well. MWR TA is a regional transit authority. There's a couple of them.
Right. Again, like any project in town, there would be review, there would be an evaluation on if there needed to be safety improvements. Anything would be reviewed and we, the requirements are very clear and which why the first round and the number, some of the parcels originally selected. Did not work. Cause we had to have a certain number of acres and they have to not, you know, you have to exclude wetlands. You have to exclude, you have to have. Access, you have to have a number of, you can't just choose any land and say, this is our land. So a lot of thought was put into this process. Yes.
If you expand the zone, does that have any effect on whether you're in compliance or not?
Stand beyond one parcel, then we can no longer limit to, to that seventy-eight. Then we have to expand beyond. So.
I don't think you're answering the question I asked. The question I asked is if you expand the, the zone where, which allowed the, the overlay zone. Does that have any effect on whether the, whether you're in compliance, still containing the one that you proposed? Does that have any effect on whether you're in compliance with the state rules?
Speaking, please.
If we expand and include more parcels, then we have less control over any kind of shape. And I don't believe we would become, we would get into compliance because I don't, I, we would have a harder time. Getting approval at town meeting and support.
I answered the question.
No, if you expand the zone, you will still be in compliance. If you add more properties to it.
Right.
You just now are changing it from the possibility of adding seventy-eight or maybe, maybe it ends up being ninety units. I'm not sure. To the town to, let's say, two hundred and fifty or three hundred or seven hundred and fifty. How many, how do you think that would fly at town meeting?
I didn't ask that question.
No, no.
Well, you answered the question I asked.
Yes. It's theoretically possible. Yes.
And who was speaking?
Michael Newman. And the answer I got was that if you expand the zone to include other areas, you would remain in compliance with the state rules.
Yes, I heard the discussion. I just can't see who is speaking or what, what name or what, I can't see the person who's speaking. Thank you.
Judy Schindler Rothschild, sixty-three Lakes. I just want to say I've been through a lot of these meetings and I appreciate all the hard work by the planning committee. I've seen the different drafts over time and to be within a certain distance of the MBTA. To have the possibility of hooking up to water and sewer with the kind of density that we're talking about. In my opinion, this is the best possible proposal. I understand about the traffic. I see it on my street too. I, I just want to put that out there. I think it's going to be difficult at town meeting. But I thank those of us who have participated from day one and have gone to other communities and listened for hours how people are struggling with this. I just want to lend my support.
Appreciate that. Thank you for saying that.
I do. I think, um, as a town, we need an owl to capture the audience.
You know, I'll just, I'll, I'll address Mr. Newman's point just one more time, which is just. People may be interested that the first draft of this coming from the state would have required the town to zone a minimum of fifty acres. Buildable at fifteen units per acre density. So to allow for adding seven hundred and fifty units to the town, which. Is, you know, not unreasonable for a large city, but it's ridiculous for, and that's why they actually. They created that new category called small neighboring communities and they exempted us from the fifty acre thing. So the first, uh, the first draft of this would have required us to. Do either multiple parcels or, you know, one very large parcel that allowed up to seven hundred and fifty units, which is, you know, clearly a. Tremendous eventual burden on the town if it all gets developed that way. So, um, this is considerably toned down from the original requirement.
Especially when you think about our town is in the neighborhood of about sixteen hundred, uh, homes anyways. Seven hundred and fifty is quite a number.
Michael Newman again. Uh, you, you just pointed out what would, uh, be a larger number. If we were across the boundary to no longer being a small community, is that where that fifty acre thing comes in? You know, what, what, what would be our requirement if we were right across the, the size?
I believe that Holliston is across the boundary. So actually.
And if you want to know what it's like for, this is Judy Schindler Rothschild from sixty-three Lakes Street in Sherburne. If you are interested. Contact the town of Holliston and sit for many, many hours with, I would say, sixty or seventy residents from the town of Holliston. Trying to sort this out where they don't have town water or sewer. And, and going back and forth is, do we have to now put in town water and sewer? I mean, if, if you think this was a lot of back and forth. Given the strain on the town of Holliston with just five hundred more people, it would, to me, it was really eye opening. And the state representatives were there too. The state rep was there. State senator was there. This is a conundrum.
And they're also a neighboring community. They're not a directly adjacent community like a Framingham or a Natick or an Ashland would be.
That doesn't make sense.
I think they were over seven hundred units. They have to produce.
Yes.
So that's a big, so they have to show seven hundred units.
In town, if, if. My reading of it, you didn't, you weren't required to have the water and sewer in place.
No, no.
The overlay district.
Correct.
You don't have to provide those things upfront.
And that's the same with the, 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 the traffic patterns and the other things that would, might need to be done if some, if a development would go in. But that's not a requirement from this now. It's just an overlay district. It's, it's just a permitting aspect.
And if something should change by April, it'll be addressed at town meeting?
My vision, the state is going to push a bigger something on us and we'd be better off. Being ahead of the game.
We are in compliance and we have our bylaw approved by town meeting and then accepted by the attorney generals. We're in a good, better position. Are there any other questions? I really appreciate everyone attending.
We need to go through the other aspects.
We, okay. So there the, the other section of the bylaw that, uh, in the bylaw, the, um, the table. The classes of districts that get amended under. Section two, four point two. Wait, classes of districts.
Is there a question?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, Two Lakes Street. I, I want to thank everybody again for all their hard work that, that you guys have done over the years. And having to listen to all of us who are coming in at the last minute with all my little thoughts and everything. And I, I, I know it's really difficult because you're saying, well, where were you two years ago? And you know what? That's a good question. So I, I just want to thank everybody. I want to wish everybody a wonderful holiday and a wonderful new year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you.
I appreciate.
So we, the other discussions that we need to just, we're going to quickly go through, um, the amendments that'll be added. Uh, there's a, the, sorry, the bylaw gets added at town meeting and then we have amending. Oh. I think your voices are being picked up by the microphone. Can't hear some people and then other people are getting broadcast to the world. So just a heads up. So. Um, so as was printed in the hearing notice that the, the bylaw gets. What is being presented to town meeting will be the bylaw and then the various sections of our existing zoning that get amended. Is the zoning bylaws, the town updated? And so the numbering has updated slightly with the new code that the town clerk worked on. So it's section two forty, which is all of our zoning bylaws. All zoning bylaws are now under the town code section two forty. So then it's section two point four, classes of district. We would need to add this multifamily overlay. And then you can see the red line version. So what's black is what is already, if you were to go to the town website and look at the town code. Two forty is our zoning bylaws. The red is going to be what we will be presenting for amending at town meeting to add. And so it's in, um. We. Resident EA has, has been added in nineteen ninety-one, as you can see. But there's, um, some, we've done some research. We've done, we've been working as a planning board on a lot of housekeeping of our zoning bylaws. And in this process, we've discovered some things that maybe were missed over the years. And so one of them was updating that this. Resident EA actually goes back to nineteen seventy-nine. Um, it might've been updated in the zoning in ninety-one, but. It was then the language of our EA bylaw was amended in two thousand eight, again in two thousand seventeen and then in twenty twenty-three. So that red line change you'll see, then residence. Uh, district M is still printed in our zoning bylaw, but we don't use M any longer. M was changed to EA in two thousand eight. So EA replaces district M, but we want to make sure that our zoning gets updated. Housekeeping issues for town meeting. And then we have. The overlay districts. Um, the floodplain district, there were a number of changes that maybe didn't, hadn't gotten written into. Um, let's see, how is it written? We've got the flood overlay district, the various overlay districts that we have throughout town. We have a number. Floodplain district. Multifamily overlay district, which would be twenty twenty-five. We have had as a town, a wireless communication overlay districts, one and two, which were added in nineteen seventy-seven, but somehow didn't make it into. The list of class of districts. We're not adding that district, that overlay. It's already been added. We're just updating what, how the zoning, um. How this classification is listed. And then the large scale ground mounted solar voltaic facilities. Those were added in two thousand eleven and amended in twenty twenty-three, but never, that, that text never made it into the code. Uh, it's been. Under multi-dwellings, section three point two. There's the. Use, the permissive use that right now multi-dwellings are allowed in EA as discussed earlier this evening, which is EA allows for up to four units per acre. Now, multi-dwellings would be allowed. Um, except at two forty, section two forty-four point five, which would be our.
Open space, which was.
Open space.
It was never added and it shouldn't have been added. So that's why we're choosing to, we're adding the multifamily overlay district. As EA, we need to add the open space as well. So that's why we have two sections listed.
And then five point seven would be the new multifamily overlay district. So it would need to be added if it passes at town meeting, that would get inserted as another district, another overlay. Red lines and then the table of use regulations.
Heidi May, is this, and, and Heidi, do we, if I, if there are proposed tweaks to language, is this the time to get into those?
Yes, if you want to, because after we finish going through these, the planning board will vote to accept whatever language. So we should discuss it with tweaks.
In the hearing.
In here.
Yeah.
So, uh. So I guess just to be clear, do I als, do we also need to discuss? Um, anything in these sections? That I have from our other housekeeping discussions that isn't showing up in this red line?
What else?
What are we missing? Is there something?
Nothing so far, but I know there's things coming up.
Okay. So I was trying to focus this mainly on our multifamily overlay district for the primary ones. So we'll have another hearing for all of the administrative housekeeping ones.
Okay. And, and then my question is, we can repeat a section in those hearings, right?
Here and there, yes. But I want to make sure you don't miss any multifamily overlay districts, if I may.
Okay. Um, so in this one, in three point two twenty-six. The only tweak I would make is to say or here, the way it says or here, so that we're sort of covering both and not. Uh, I mean, it's, it seems obvious, but it seems like or would be just a little more clear.
Instead of and?
Yep. The other thing that we've done related to multi-dwellings is clarified that this would be three family or more. Because in other discussions, we've talked about identifying a duplex separately. Does that belong in this conversation or in housekeeping?
Definition. So we're not defining what, this isn't the definition section for multifamily dwellings. It's a permissive use one. I don't think we're, you know, this, this, this line is not defining that multifamily is, multifamily is a more or two.
Um, okay.
That's, that's defined in five point seven language.
Yes, you're, you're right. That would be defined there. Um, okay. Cause we, we did make that change in, in our housekeeping discussions, but we didn't have the chapter three A bylaw in front of us at that moment. I'm, I'm just going to mark it. Well.
We will have another administrative hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So that was the classes of districts. We do a vote.
Uh, just, and one other, one other note is that this language for twenty-five, twenty twenty-three ATM by article. Uh, just, and one other, one other note is that this language for twenty-five, twenty twenty-three ATM by article twenty-three is, we, we can choose to delete that and replace it with twenty twenty-three. I see you did a cleanup here. This language is pervasive throughout the zoning bylaws. So we would just need to do that as a cleanup sort of system-wide as well. So I just wanted to point it out, it doesn't affect only this section, it affects many, many sections. Okay.
Okay, so then the next section to review is this uh, three point two, section twenty-six, schedule of use regulations. That was, wait, that was the schedule of we did classes of districts, and then schedule of uses.
Table of use regulation.
It's the table at the bottom of that whole section.
Okay, the use table regulations, okay, yep, I've got that. Alright, and then, and so that just was inserting and a, a discussion on multi-dwellings and citing where those are permissive to accommodate the multi-family overlay district. And then the next section would be three point two.
Well, so, so Heidi, I mean, Heidi and Heidi May, again, I would put or here, and then the other consideration is that in, in our sort of ongoing item, this becomes twenty-six A, because we insert twenty-six as a duplex without changing all of the subsequent numbering. There are cases where there's a number and then a number followed by an A. So in the version that I've been working with, I made this twenty-six A. I don't know, like, again, I don't know if this much detail is too too much, because this is part of housekeeping. Not necessarily part of chapter three.
Let's, right, so let's, as far as the numbering and kind of conformity questions that we have to make sure that everything looks, let's let's um, reserve that for housekeeping, because when we do the housekeeping hearing, we will have to have all of those table use, we'll have to redo that in completions, the table used, the right now, we're just showing how the multi-family fits into these, gets added to these various sections.
Okay, so my only change would then be to change the and to an or.
Okay. Um, then it's the um the, so the, what, what, the sections of zoning bylaw that will get affected by the multi-family overlay, the classes of district, we've just looked at the schedule of use regulations. We've looked at. And then there's the and we look at the table of use regulations, so that it will have to now have multi-family dwellings and district inserted into our existing table use regulations, and then the schedule of dimensional requirements, that schedule section, in section two forty, attachment one, will be um, updated to include the overlay, uh, to include the multi-family overlay. So you've got, as noted before, we've got town, we have residence A, residence B, residence C, residence EA, we have the business general, we have business professional, and then we now will be inserting multi-family overlay.
Yeah, so you want, Chris and I had talked about this, so that's why this version here, what we were gonna do one that's in, in the article, we're gonna add an asterisk on that, because we discussed that overlay, this, what we're listing here, were all districts, whole districts.
Okay.
We have a lot of overlay districts, and then we have a bunch of little asterisks. So Chris Kenny's suggestion was that we add an asterisk on that. And then list on the language that was enclosed, that sent to you, properties within the multi-family overlay district, open space residential subdivision, planned unit developments, and large-scale ground-mounted solar full take overlay districts follow their outline dimensional standards, because a lot of those overlay districts have their own different dimensional standards. And they're not starting, they're not listed here, but we weren't gonna take the time to start saying photovoltaic is blah, blah, blah this. So we decided it's easier to make a reference, go to the bylaw and read the dimensional standards.
Okay, that's, because this is an overlay, EA is not an overlay. ABC is not an overlay, business and is not an overlay, it's an actual district. So, right, so we
That was the proposal, that tonight you will vote on.
Sorry. Okay. Is everybody understanding where that is? Okay.
You might consider what happens if an overlay uh is not contained in a single underlying district, that you might state that it is it has to comply with a more restrictive district.
That would probably be in its own, over the dimensional standards within each overlay.
Well, you're, you're talking about having the overlay district comply with the underlying, underlying uh district. It contains the overlay, and you have to address the issue of what the, what happens when the overlay is in two of them. I don't care how you do it, but you have to address.
No, that's a good question.
Right.
But the, but the overlay is an, like, an add-on option, right?
I don't, I don't understand this objection. The, the overlay is an additional set of things you can do. So if you had like, I mean, the way I would interpret it is if you had, let's say, a overlay district that overlaps a residence A and a residence B chunk of land, then it doesn't change anything about what you can do with single-family residences in residence A or in residence B. It merely adds this multi-family to both these areas.
Now, what's the setback requirement? So you're building a multi-family building, it sits right on the boundary of your A and B. What's this?
It's the setback requirement for multi-family.
Right, and it's just as
Overlay district had its own dimensional standards written in, and I think that's why.
Uh, you don't see an overlay district standard in this list. That's, that's why.
It's, that's why the hashtag is here.
Because it tells you to go to that section.
Yeah, it's the last.
Turn the page, right there on the top.
That's the footnote.
So it'd be another section.
To a set of standards that are in a different place, right, but what is the outward district or overlay district that goes to, that sits over two underlying districts?
Okay, I'm gonna research that, because I just want to, I want to be able to figure that out.
It would just be smart to state it in the, in the rule. That it follows the, the most, the more restrictive of the underlying district, of the district it sits over. That would, that would be
And I think it would be that it's
You could state it the other way, follows the least restrictive of them, take your choice, but pick one.
If it spans two parcels, you couldn't, your overlay only means that, that, that both of those parcels are entitled to that additional option, whatever that use is. So say it was a photovoltaic, and you had two parcels side by side, unless those parcels were owned by the same owner, which then you know, eliminates that property parcel line, I think there's a setback.
I think we need to look, it may be addressed in our bylaws, but I don't know that for sure, so I want to be able to.
I would think that it's each parcel.
I still, I'm, I'm not trying to understand the purpose of this text, but I don't understand Mr. Newman's objection either, but just please let me finish. Um, the residence A has a setback requirement. Residence B has a setback requirement. The multi-family district has a setback requirement. Therefore, I, I don't understand what the question is. If, if you have a multi-family overlay district that overlays a piece of residence A and residence B, if you build something in conformance with the residence B, in residence B, you're fine. If you build something in conformance with the residence A standards in residence A, you're fine. And if you build something in conformance with the multi-family that is in either or both, you're fine. So what's the question?
Which one applies if the overlay district lays over A and B?
May, maybe, can I offer something?
Yeah. Neither A nor B. The overlay district applies to multi-family. And the residence A district or residence B district applies to things that are not multi-family.
I, I believe you just have to specify something. You have to specify that it has to comply with whichever part, district the parcel has to sits in, or you have to specify that it has to comply with the worst case or the best.
I can hear you, Steph. Steph, if you maybe can share some clarification, Steph?
Neither of them.
Actually, I think this might help.
But this reference, the last sentence references.
Alright.
So when we look at, this is the stretch for our bylaw for the multi-family overlay district. So we can go and look at what the multi-family.
Steph, did you have something to say that would add clarification?
Yes, I would like to add clarification when people are ready.
We're referencing that, yeah, sorry.
So what we're all the same kind of fits that, so this doesn't matter whether it's under A or B, your multi-family would follow.
So what you're, what you're saying is, you need another line in here that says, see five point seven point five for multiple overlay districts.
Or we're saying put an asterisk here. Or we're saying from the back, and that, the sentence will be down below on the next page on it. That says, we need to, we need to look at
Okay, you, it sounds like you're dealing with it. I, why wouldn't you just put it in the same table? Because it's not a district.
Because it's not a official district, it's the overlay, so you'd have to have, or you could have a whole section saying overlay districts and list them all out. And then have all these listed here.
Which one, which one do I have to comply with? If I'm building in an overlay district, I just have to look at this, I don't have to look at this table at all?
Depends on what you're building. If you're building a single-family home for residence A, you're gonna follow your residence A. If you're saying, oh, I'm building multi-family in residence A, then you're gonna be following this. You've gotta decide what you, you know, what
From a dimensional point.
Yeah, so you have, what's your project? If it's a single-family home, you're not looking at this. Just what most of our dwellings are gonna be.
I think that's, we are, it's not curious.
Okay.
I see where you're going.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's a reference standard. Without the com, without being cumbersome, listing it here.
This text doesn't point me at that. Okay, it's, it it is, is a project on a property that, that governs which table you're, you're going to.
So the district follows the outlined dimensional standards.
What you, what you just told me is that, that the project decides where I go, and that text doesn't tell me that.
Project only allowed in areas that have that overlay. You can only put a solar facility, a, a large scale ground mounted on parcels that have that overlay.
And if I'm putting a solar facility in, and I'm in the solar district, then I have to go look in the solar table somewhere else.
Yes.
So this text doesn't do, doesn't tell me that, that's all. The only thing that's wrong is that I don't get it out of that paragraph. So, so I know what you're trying to do, but the text doesn't, doesn't get it.
It doesn't have to. You're not allowed to build a solar facility in a residence B district. Unless you're, you're only allowed to build it in a solar overlay. Obviously, the solar overlay applies.
Let's see, I'm just looking at how we
Clarify it, but I, I can't understand why anyone would be confused by this.
Well, it, it, it is, if you're, if someone's trying to look in our zoning bylaws and trying to figure out what they're allowed to do and what they, where they need to refer, I'm just looking at the language. We've got this table, and the table gives us the different districts that we have, and then let's see.
Where's Marion? Dana, help us out here.
I know, then we need to, let's see, the, the table. I mean, at some, it places, you know, this asterisk could be um in, before the asterisk, language such as, for overlay districts, this asterisk is recommending you go to that overlay district bylaw for your requirements.
So if you had a project.
Steph, hand it, Steph, do you have something?
She, she wanted to say something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a really long time ago, and I am having a hard time even following the conversation, so, because of the, the sound quality, so, um, it's okay.
Is there some alternative, like, you know, projects develop in accordance with multi-family overlay district and all these other things should follow their, the, the corresponding dimensional standards?
So if we say, so
That'd be a clarification. The next thing, I'll write something up.
I, I think it is clarified, because it's it is confusing that it has the word properties there.
That's I think where we're going here.
The, the property can be treated one way or the other, depending on whether you're doing something in accordance with the overlay standards or something in accordance with the base standards.
Well, I'd like to see, instead of, I'd like to see somehow it in a list format, so properties within and then list the various overlays that we have in town. So that it's very clear that these are, we have numerous overlays in town, and that was what was somewhat worked on with the section two four, code section two forty, section two point one, where we have the list of classes of districts. This list of overlay districts could maybe be repeated.
So projects developed within, and then have your list.
Right.
Right.
You go something generic as see the corresponding overlay district in the bylaws, or you can specify where exactly the number in the bylaw to go to.
Right, right.
One or the other, you could be generic about it or specific about it, but at least it's all included to go there to look for.
Project permitted uh, by, under an overlay district, they'll follow the dimensional standards for that overlay district.
Sounds pretty simple, okay.
Very straightforward.
Say that again, please. Projects permitted?
Permitted by an overlay district shall follow the dimensional standards of that overlay district.
You, you could repeat that language for the, each of the overlay districts have a sentence for each.
Yeah, you, you you know, you could list the overlay districts in parentheses or something in there if you want.
They are listed in section two forty dash two, two point one. I'm sharing my screen right now, so we can refer to that for a list of them.
I don't find any harm in copying and pasting that list and repeating it where you've got that pound sign.
The har, the harm is, is that if we add an overlay district, we have to remember to add it in two places.
Use the words such as in, in this place, and you're fine.
Problem we're gonna have is, this was a one-page formatted table, and now we're gonna add a big section on it. So we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to work on that.
I mean, I think, I don't know, I think the reference standard is.
Well, and maybe, and I guess that might be part of right, it, it, it all depend on three point two. I guess, what I can't remember is how much other language in our zoning bylaw falls after three point two. Is there a bunch of text between?
Yeah, and we don't have to come up with an answer tonight, we're gonna have another hearing.
Okay, this is the housekeeping, and the, the, the way it's formatted will be the other hearing. This is just, where does multi-family overlay get inserted into?
I think the language Mr. Newman presented for introducing this is appropriate, but I would think we'd want to um maintain the, the reference to the dimensional standards of the keeping clarity.
So, so there's, to answer your question, Heidi, there's not a ton of language between the three point two and four point two, I think is what you were asking, but my, my question with the language that was suggested is that it's, I think what I heard was project permitted by an overlay district shall follow dimensional standards of that overlay district. It's, my question is about the word permitted. Is, does that? Is, does that imply that it's only by permit projects? Or by right projects?
You, you might clean that language up in some way to make it clear. I don't know.
We say allowed and.
You're using the overlay permitting developed in accordance with. To allow this project, then you follow its dimensional standards.
Allowed instead of permitted, because permit, like you say, that's too close to, there are two different meanings, but they're, they're too close.
Okay.
Uh, Marion has, uh, used.
Allowed works.
It's not even really just the dimensional standards, it's everything. I mean, if you're. If you're going to build a multifamily development. In a multifamily overlay zone, it's got to comply with every single requirement in section five seven.
Right.
And it doesn't, it can basically ignore the underlying zones and vice versa.
Um, I think Marion Neutra has a hand raised and I'd love to hear what you have to say, Marion, if you're still with us.
Oh, I am. I, I kind of drifted away there a little bit, but, uh, I'm back. Uh, yeah, I think, I think you're getting to a solution here. But just to remember that, uh. I- if some overlay districts, like for example, the ground mounted solar, for example. In some districts, you're actually in the overlay districts, but it's also allowed outside the overlay district by special permit. So maybe the word permit has to come in there somewhere. You know, when they, uh, let's just use a solar array as, as an example. There are dimensional standards within the solar array district. Uh, but if you're not in the district and you've got a special permit to put up a solar array, what are your setbacks? Are they the same as the solar array district or the underlying district? I mean, just, it's just a question that wasn't quite clear. To me, yet.
Do we want to clean up all the language for all the different types of permitting, or do we not just focus on the multi?
For tonight, our goal is.
Yeah.
Just bringing attention to and, and agreeing that we, that these sections will be inserted into our zoning that are relevant and related to the MBTA zoning bylaw, the multifamily overlay district. So we've gone through the classes of districts, we've gone through the schedule of use regulations. We've gone through the table of use regulations. We, um. We have not, have we gone to the schedule of dimensional requirements?
Am I now hearing that we do not need to work out the language tonight?
We don't believe we need to, we just need to agree that we would be adding this. And then we will have our housekeeping where we have the final, we will have gotten the formatting correct hopefully on the chart. And will visually then agree that this is the new dimensional requirement chart and this is the new, uh. Yes, Marion?
Uh, just one, one other thought, you may have figured this out already, but, uh, for the MOD district, the new overlay. Are you assuming that the, uh, dimensional requirements of the multifamily housing in the overlay district will conform with the underlying zoning? Because I can see that it would be a problem. Uh, if a multifamily under the MBTA Act or under three A, uh, goes into a district where you need, you know, a, a large setback. Or, uh, it might be harder to build.
It's only RA, it's only an RA. The MOD is.
The setbacks, the setbacks are different.
Oh, right, okay, okay, I got it. No problem then.
Then the, the schedule of dimen- four point two schedule of dimensional requirements would. Have the, that's right, we just went through that, that was what we just completed, and then the zoning map that we would be inserting, the zoning map with. Uh, an updated zoning map that would have the multifamily overlay district shown. And that would be section, the, the town code two forty, section nine point one, which is the zoning map that gets inserted into our zoning bylaws. And it would illustrate this new multifamily overlay district up at the upper corner, the parcel that.
That Steph is putting up. Um, and this map is also on file with the town clerk, so we want to make sure that we can say it's been on file, um, it is online. At this, what I'd wanted to do is we noticed that we do not have these other overlay district maps available anywhere. And so I hunted them down and I, I wanted to, and we can make this again at our housekeeping one if you want, but I wanted to, we can computer that. We did have maps of our solar overlay, our wireless communication overlay districts, our floodplain district as well. Um, that we're working on a map because there isn't a great map with floodplains available and we're going to hire somebody to create a map in time.
Isn't it available on the GIS?
No. There's that one, I did draw, Tom Crater did make one today that I circulated, the other one that was around that's a little bit needed, but it's not quite clear enough yet. So I want, we'll have to get someone that can make it look like some of the other maps that we have.
I mean, that'd be a good place for it, too.
Yeah, but we, we should, we should have all these maps together online in our zoning bylaw. We should have one place where people can go say, what is our solar overlay map? Right now, it's not there.
It's not there, probably legally doesn't exist.
No, it does, because you refer to it and we know that you can go and get it at town hall, but.
Shaky, it really is.
Yeah, so we're correcting some of that and maybe putting it on there.
Marion, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly comment that, uh, I thought your, your PowerPoint deck you used tonight was really very good. Uh, one little comment is on the map where you show the overlay district kind of a crosshatched. It's really hard to see. At least on my, on my computer, you can kind of almost see that there's crosshatched up there in the corner, but. Uh, I think you need to maybe have, show, yeah. You need to maybe show two maps, maybe this to start, and then zoom in a little bit on that area so that. Uh, in, in a different PowerPoint slide, I mean, make another PowerPoint slide with a zoomed in image.
Can we tone down the civic to maybe eighty percent and then keep that at a hundred percent, the district?
Something like that, whatever you want to do, but just as a member of the public in the audience, I found it hard to see.
So, so this slide deck was for the purposes of this hearing, but should we be using a. Map of this nature in a future presentation? Your recommendation would be to include a plot. Have I captured that?
Or change the color or do something, so.
Yeah, I think if we tone down the rest of it to seventy or eighty percent and kept that at a hundred percent, it would stand out more.
We have to show them out for town meeting, right?
Yeah, we do need a better, this is the map that we were given by our consultant, and I know when I was working on trying to pull it out, a section of it for our mailing, it was still not. Yeah, we, I couldn't get those lines, the vector was not crisp, so in order to zoom in, we, we need, um. Some additional map work.
I, I, I'm, I'm able to, to work with it.
Okay.
I'm a Photoshop user, so.
Unless you.
For the purposes of voting on this, what you show on the screen is, it's for the purposes of determining whether or not. My piece of land is in the district or not, it is not sufficient.
The GIS would.
So.
I believe we've gone through everything that was printed in a notice of public hearing or related to the MBTA three A zoning bylaw. I believe we need to, as a board, vote to accept. These, um, what was presented.
Parcel.
The, the parcel.
The bylaw.
The bylaw.
The map.
The map and the amendments and the fact that we will be making those amendments. How they're formatted will come at housekeeping, but the fact that we will be making those amendments and inserting them into the class of districts, the schedule of use regulations, the table of use regulations. And the dimensional requirement schedule and the zoning map, that those will be added. If we are all accepting, I'd like to make a motion to accept what we presented at this.
I have a question first. I, I believe I asked this before and I just can't remember why. I, I can't remember what, why it was explained to me that this is, works, but if I look at five seven one and five seven two. Five seven one allow up to six acres of multifamily housing in a density of fifteen units per acre as of right. And five seven two, maximum extent to be developed for multifamily at, at the by right density of fifteen units per acre, should not exceed six acres within the MOD. This, my reading of this as a layman says that you have to develop it at a density of fifteen units per acre. And shouldn't it say up to fifteen units per acre? We don't have to require that they build exactly at fifteen units per acre, right? We can't prevent them from doing it, but.
Which allowed, density is allowed. I, if, we've gotten into trouble with putting the up to, because that was considered a cap by the state. The, the EOL, L H E did not want us to say up to.
Yeah, but I, I just don't understand that, because when I look at the examples on the state's website, it seems clear to me that. The town cannot restrict the developer to less than fifteen.
No, that's, that's. It says maximum extent, so you can do less than that, but we're, we're saying that's the maximum extent on that, on five point seven point two.
We say the maximum extent is six acres, but we just, each time we talk about the density, we say at a density of fifteen units per acre. And I'm saying, I don't understand why it shouldn't, shouldn't say at a density of up to fifteen units per acre.
We're told we couldn't say up to, I, I mean, I don't think.
It got, all we know is it got flagged from the AG, they were saying it was a cap.
Because it makes, I don't know, when I look at their. It, it seems clear to me that it is not actually meant to be that restricted. It seems like it's, if, if a developer said, I want to do ten units per acre. Yeah.
It's not great.
Yeah.
We would say, but by my reading of this, they can't do that. But they, they can, they, they have a den, they can build up to a density of fifteen units per acre by right, that's. No, you said up to, can't say that. I, I mean. At a density of fifteen units.
I look at fifteen, seven, four, item.
We had up to, it's English language in the first version and it was flagged and we were told that that was creating essentially a cap. And we were not allowed to put that language in.
All right, you're right. Michael, I'm sorry. Yeah, it does say up to in five seven four.
Does it say up to? Somewhere where we tried to.
No, don't look, don't look, don't look, just leave it in.
Oh, we do have up to, okay, well, there was, I don't remember anymore. This is, this version has been approved.
Yes.
I would like to go with this version.
Yes.
We've passed my turn.
Okay, it, it just seems like it's inconsistent to me. It says.
I, I see that the one area says maximum density and I can feel that you're talking the maximum is fifteen, and then if you're saying the other area says up to fifteen, I think that's okay. To me, the maximum density sits five minutes language. And then this one later on says, you're permitted is up to. We're not permitting up to, but we're saying a maximum level is fifteen.
Yeah, I don't see the word maximum anywhere.
Right, uh, number two, it's labeled max, the title of it is maximum density.
Maximum.
It says maximum extent.
Oh, maximum extent.
Is six acres. You, you need to remove the up to, five point seven point four, eight point A.
I think we should keep that in.
This is the version that.
Well, I think five seven, the, five seven one and five seven two are just kind of like setting the background and five seven four is really. What I would read is the controlling statement, so I guess I'm okay with it, but I, I still think it's inconsistent. Go ahead.
It's perhaps inconsistent, I hesitate to go through and since this is the version that we've. Had two state governing bodies approve.
Understood.
I don't think they conflict. I think they can, I think you, like you said, one gives the background of what it is and the other one's saying this is. The permission.
Sure. It's just, it's not consistent, that's all the point of it is. I think it's fine.
Yeah.
And maybe the inconsistency is why it got, it passed, allowing that one ti- a time where we said the up to was allowed. Because it was this inconsistent and at the reality is, is any project that ever gets proposed, if this overlay gets passed. There would be time for discussion and whoever is looking to.
You're looking at four A, Rob?
Five point seven.
Five point seven, one, two and four.
Yeah, five point seven point two, item four, letter A.
I think there was.
No, it's.
That's?
Uh, no, that's, that I understand. That basically says you can't effectively restrict the density to less by. Putting setbacks on individual units or, you know, you, you can't come up with some other screwy regulation that effectively means they can't reach the density.
Yep. What are you?
No, I understand that.
I was confused about where you were looking.
I was looking at five seven one. And five seven two. Paragraph two, both of which seem to say that the density should be fifteen units. And then it's only later in five seven four that it says the density can be up to fifteen units. Um, the, the first two uses seem to imply that the density must be exactly fifteen units, no more, no less.
No, I, I don't read it that way. Five seven one, it says it allows it to be fifteen units.
Yeah. It allows you to build up to six acres at a density of fifteen units per acre.
That's, yeah, that's the maximum.
That means you can't let a density of fourteen units per acre.
It says it's at the by right density of fifteen units. So it's, it's not saying that you develop it at that density, it's just referring to.
The law.
The law, which is a by right of density of fifteen units. So it's not actually a requirement, it's actually a, because the language would be different if it said the, develop for multifamily housing at the density of fifteen units. The fact that by right is in there means that it's, it's, it's a description of, uh, a scripted language of another, cross referring to another section.
All right, well, for purposes of the hearing, in order to close the hearing, we need to vote. And my motion is to accept the. The additions or the, the, accept the bylaw and accept. The, the language of the bylaw and accept that we, uh, the, the, the insertions into the zoning bylaw of the various charts as listed two through six.
The maps is presented.
The maps, the ta- various tables. The parcel that was presented, or accept the parcel that was presented on, uh. For our multifamily overlay district, accepts the update to the class of districts, accept the update to the schedule of use regulations, accept the update to the table of use regulations. Accept the insertion to the schedule of dimensional requirements, update and accept the map insertion. Is there a second?
Certainly.
All right, all those in favor?
I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Again.
Oh, discussion.
We talked about some minor. Updates we're going to make. Do we have to vote again? Obviously, if we make any updates, but we have to open a hearing again, or?
We're going to have a hearing, because we have so many other administrative, we have the A to use and we have some other administrative.
Okay, so it'll be as part of a second official.
Some of the ones were entered, she's saying now, like, the first few that we went through, it didn't seem to be any con- any contest.
Okay, fine, so.
But we can revisit any of the votes today.
To clarify the maps a little bit, we can do that at the, the next hearing, okay. That's fine, okay.
So anything that will be, how the charts and how they look will be part of the housekeeping and we'll be able to look at that and how that is laid out. But the bylaw for. But the bylaw for multifamily, we're accepting, we're voting to accept that language. And we're voting then that we will be inserting that multifamily overlay into the various charts and classes. And we're voting that we are accepting the map that shows the parcel that we have written into the bylaw, specified in the bylaw. So it moved, seconded, is there any further? If not, I'd like to, Addie Mae Weiss is voting aye. Frank Hope.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
James Garino.
Aye.
And Steph Harrison. Thank you. Okay. All right, so with that, the time of nine nineteen P M, I will close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing, Addie Mae, and it's a, a motion seconded by Frank. All in favor, Addie Mae Weiss, aye, Frank Hope.
Aye.
Bob Wolf.
Aye.
James Garino.
Aye.
And Steph Harrison. Thank you, all right, the hearing has been closed. Okay, the other items on our agenda for this evening. Heidi, do you want to do A D U zoning by law updates?
Yeah, so mainly just wanted to have a discussion on this, I wasn't going to put anything up. I had sent out what the E O H L C, this is through the PowerPoint webinar on guidelines for A D U, the draft regulations. It's kind of what we've been looking at, they still don't have any clarification. What they said was they expect to have a public hearing on this January twentieth and then get it closed and then get regulations out and probably shortly thereafter, and then they'll get their model bylaw out. Not going to be a time for our warrant article. So it's not very helpful. And they said, oh, in time for your spring meetings. So I, I don't know how other towns are doing it, but for our town, our warrant closes January twentieth, twenty third. So we're going to have to just come up with some of our own bylaws or drafts, have our hearing. We can always have another hearing later or make amendments to some of the articles from the public hearing. But I think we have to continue to follow on our plan of having a hearing January twenty eighth. I think it's the date we were looking at. The only surprise I noticed for them is they talked about A D U's that are twelve hundred square feet, which we have by special permit, can still be by special permit, but they will allow owner occupancy to be put on those.
On the greater than twelve hundred square feet.
Well, or.
Or any of them.
Any of them that are over the nine, so that you, so they're calling them down a by right A D U and other A D U's, larger A D U's, I think. So we also may want to consider whether we want to match the terminology they're going to use. We were saying smaller A D U's and larger A D U's, I think they're calling it a by right A D U. So we may want to consider changing to matching.
At what, at what threshold?
The nine, up to nine hundred.
Yeah.
Square feet.
That's what we were saying, that's what we were calling it before.
Right, so I think they're saying.
Or you don't even need two different names, really, I mean, sometimes if I was just saying A D U's may be done by right if they meet the following criteria, A D U's may be done by special permit if they meet the following expanded criteria.
Right, but then Chris was showing that we, you know, for different things, we needed to like kind of have two different names somehow because the by right ones, no ownership required.
I feel like we had this discussion in trying to figure out what to call the two different categories. Steph, did we come up with anything?
We did, we had them a by right A D U and a special permit A D U.
Okay.
I'm, I'm ninety nine percent sure and I'm looking for it right now.
So is that?
That might have been the meeting I missed.
Oh, okay.
So that could be, we could be all, all set.
We could be.
Yeah. Yeah, we did, we talked about that quite a bit, actually, I think it was the one that.
So we don't need an answer tonight, you just wanted to have it there, look at the PowerPoint through your, your, in your free time.
Okay, yeah.
We deleted the large A D U by special permit.
Okay.
Um, well, we changed the term apartment to special permit A D U. And the apartment was the one that was up to twelve hundred square feet. So we changed the term apartment to special permit A D U and then we're adding a by right A D U to match the state language, but we obviously don't have language for that yet. It was just a, in concept, that was the plan.
Yeah.
But that would be part of the, not part of the housekeeping, that would be part of the A D U by law. So it's not typed into my housekeeping, it's just noted as a comment.
Okay, and that, so they did give definitions in that PowerPoint that was forward. So we can just look through and see if our definitions are similar.
They, they aren't. And also definitions of dwelling, dwelling unit. That, those are also even just structured differently from ours, so it's not a simple language switch.
Do we take that language from the building code, Heidi?
That's what they did. They took the language from building code, they said.
Some phrases are the same.
We're looking to try and do as much as possible to get in, use the building code language so that we'd have more consistency across the board.
Yeah. But it's not going to get into a big discussion tonight because it's getting late, so I just want to kind of put that on. For, if everyone can look at it, maybe come, think about, think of what they want to see and, and come up with suggestions for the next meeting.
But, and, and so they use the term in the PowerPoint, protected use A D U.
Oh, that's what, I was, I knew it was different from ours, yeah.
So.
Protected A D U.
Protected use A D U.
Protected.
By right, okay.
Okay.
So that's the one that is by right.
Yeah.
Is protected use the same as the Dover amendment, the same as?
That's probably where they got it from, it's because they talked about the Dover amendment in here.
With the nursery schools and churches and all of that, the protected use, okay.
So look through it and then next meeting, we can have a discussion on what terms you would like to use. Uh, we've already talked about our administrative zoning updates that we'll look at. The next big one unfortunately is the sign language for zoning update. That one we should talk about. So in your packet, Chris Kenny went and put together a draft language for zoning bylaw.
You want me to share it, Heidi?
Sure.
Sure, thanks Heidi, I mean, thanks Steph.
Yeah. So it looks like what we did is we added under five point two point four general regulations for temporary sign in all districts. And we already had the one, which was a select board may grant a special permit on property of the town of Sherburne for the erection and it has, you know, the A B Cs of that. So with that, one of the questions that I have is if we have that, why do we need to? And if we do need to. There, there's a number of questions on how this is written that I have.
But that's all existing language.
The, the two is a new language.
Is two new or is?
Two is new.
It is?
Yes, it's a temporary sign displaying expressions of political, ideological, religious or charitable idea shall be permitted.
Printed, right, okay.
Provided that such signs meet the following criteria. And I just didn't know why this needs to be put in if the, if it number one, if the select, if you have to go to a select board for a special permit, that they wouldn't do those things. Why, why do we need to have the, this new section?
It's changing it from by special permit to basically by right.
Yes, that, those uses are by right, the other ones are not by right. It's again like the Dover amendment, these protected uses, sorry.
On private property.
Five two five and removing item A, the purpose of putting this second section in is the the things that are being referenced there are protected by constitution and federal law. And what they're trying to do is have s- some restrictions on the things that are protected. I'm not sure you can have those restrictions anyway, but the, the purpose of, of that piece is to make the sign laws consistent with the other requirements. And it would be clearer if you included in item two, signs expressly allowed by constitution or federal state laws, as well as other temporary signs that you're specifically mentioning. Indeed, I believe the ones that are mentioned are the ones that are expressly allowed currently. But you don't, you, you'd be better off to include all that other stuff in there because if the things that are expressly allowed ever expanded beyond what's in this list, the entire sign restriction would fail.
Uh, yeah, they, they were modeling off of several other towns that have.
But, but that's what they're doing, but.
But your point of, we can say, of putting your temporary signs just blank, temporary signs as allowed by, you know, federal constitutional free speech will find a right language such as political, ideological, by, by putting that, then.
You're, you're expanding the allowed uses into beyond what is necessarily allowed. It's a slight expansion, but it's, it's an expansion. But you want to include anything else that's expressly required, if you will. That expressly allowed by things for the allowed period, whatever, because it may not, you know, the sixty days is indeed, I believe, what the federal political rule is. So, so what they're trying to do is cover the things that are under the general rule, under the protected pieces in, in order to get control in some ways. I'd be very careful about the language, the language in five two five A, signs expressly protected by any, et cetera, doesn't restrict the usage to the protected period. You're allowed to put up a political sign for sixty days. Five two five, you're allowed to put a political sign for however long you like. It doesn't, it doesn't limit it to the protected, you know, the old language that's crossed out now, doesn't limit it to the protected period. It allows it whenever you want, as long as it was one of the ones that is protected by other rules.
I thought it said political signs related to the, shall be removed, I mean explicitly call out political signs.
Well, they're, they're explicitly calling out, what they're explicitly calling out, I believe, is what is required by federal law.
Yeah.
Okay, but they're, they're just calling it out rather than having the bylaw apply to the, what's required by the law. So they're, they're, if they change the federal law to say you needed ten days instead of seven, your bylaw would fail. It, it would be in, completely inapplicable.
But by specifying that section two, you essentially sort of five point two point four, section two, is, is more of an explanation of what lies behind five point two point five A and, and therefore that's why it's crossed out because it's no.
But what, what they're trying to do is explicitly do what five two A was implicitly doing.
And then that's.
But you can't do it explicitly safely. You have to reference the, you have to reference what you're allowing. You, you have to reference the, the protected stuff im- implicitly to be safe. If you, if you, if you call out the way it's called out today and they change it, it, it fails.
Yeah, no, and, and we can still tweak, we're not, but this isn't our hearing on it and we're not voting, so I think these are good comments for us to look into.
Right, this is just the first time that we're looking at this, Steph, yes.
Um, my, the way I interpret this is that they are taking these protected signs and moving them from exempt, completely exempt from any requirements to regulated.
You can't regulate them under their protected use. You can only regulate them outside of their protected use. So you've expanded, they, they, they're trying to do what you're saying, but you can't do that. You're not allowed to do that. They're, so they're, they're sort of expanding it a little bit because they're calling it out explicitly and allowing it whether or not it's protected.
Well, they do it in a timed manner and place, they're allowed to put some limits on, they're allowing the freedom of speech, they're allowing it, but they're allowing it within a narrow.
You can't do that.
I, I don't know.
The, the federal law has sets, sets a requirement, you have to live within that requirement.
But I can tell you, there are a lot of towns in Massachusetts that have already, this is adopted by the attorney general's office.
And, and as long as the underlying law matches this, it's okay.
Yeah.
If the underlying law is different in any way and it changes over time.
Yeah.
The whole thing fails, the whole section becomes inapplicable.
Well, that's one we'll have to re-vote at town meeting when we're going with a lot of this.
So, so by allowing, by allowing the general case.
Yeah.
You can, you can, you can still, oh, leave this language in there, which expands the general case today to what it might be today. But it, but it expands the general case. You can't restrict the general case any further. For example, I don't believe that you're allowed to apply this lighting restriction that's in the list to, uh, the, in the way the federal law protects it. I don't think you could, you could say you can't light it.
But again, the attorney general has approved it for other towns.
The attorney general can approve it.
Yeah.
And it's approved as permissive, you know, but it's not approved as restrictive against the federal law.
But it's been enforceable in other towns.
Again, as long as the federal law, I, I think if you went and tried to enforce the lighting thing.
Yeah.
You would fail. If you tried to enforce the timing stuff, you would succeed because the federal law allows that timing. So, and maybe the federal law has a lighting thing, it's, I don't know.
Yeah, I just.
But that's, that's the issues that you, that you face.
Strategically, we could agree to follow consistently what has been approved by attorney general and has been adopted by other towns. And to your point, there, there's, there's maybe an enforcement issue, but it wouldn't, that, that's one approach to take.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I know the sign that this is after. If you went and did legal battle against it, you'd probably lose with this language. If you, if you move the as protected stuff up there, that as, and you don't have to say protected, you say signs expressly allowed by any. Then, then you would succeed. That's why I stuck around for this.
No, not this, this is good.
Really, it's a brilliant thing.
Yeah.
So in number one, it says that the select board made grants, how does that happen in number two?
The select board's not allowed to, to control those, those signs.
Yeah, uh, just for the records, Steph had asked, if, Michael Newman is the only one left in the audience.
Thank you, I just, I can't even see how many heads there are in the audience.
I realize you can't, so.
I thought they had updated, but I guess we don't have any camera here. I mean, it would have been nice for tonight's hearing to see who all was here.
If you, well, we've done that.
There's another one.
In the old Dover ca- cable TV system.
Steph, if you stop sharing your screen for a moment.
I have to let that one in.
None of these cameras, I believe, function any longer.
That one was functioning, I saw somebody's head in it.
One on top of the TV function, but I don't think.
I saw Heidi's head in it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's Heidi's computer.
Oh, that's her computer, yeah.
Oh, it's showing up on my, yeah, the Zoom.
Yeah.
Cause I signed in these.
One point, at one point, the camera in, on the TV. One point, at one point, the camera in, on the TV swiveled and looked down at somebody sitting in the back by the door.
Yeah, I did that several times while.
Yeah, but not consistently.
You couldn't see faces. It would be, I guess, an, you know, an ask for, if we're going to do these things, um, and actually be back in person. It'd be good to.
Audience cam as well as a board cam.
Right.
I mean, if we're gonna do that, we need better two-way audio too.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of background noise. If two people are talking at once in the room, I can't hear what anybody's saying. And, um, yeah.
I guess the, the model is no more hybrid meetings, just Zoom.
No, the, the model is to get hybrid to work.
Exactly, it should be, yeah.
You gotta get hybrid to work. You gotta live in a world where you can do this. This is ridiculous, you know? Costs money, anyway.
Yes, uh, so the goal tonight was to have you see the sign language update potential. Um, it is a work in progress, but it's gonna have to be a short work in progress. We will be talking to the town council and, and finding out to make sure that this will comply with federal regulations. I'm hoping that we submit another draft to you that's been vetted through town council, um, by the next meeting.
Okay.
I don't know, this, this regulation seems, I mean, I haven't read the federal right. Uh, so I don't really know what federal law sort of guarantees you, although I would assume that, you know, whatever, but like, I mean, this seems like extremely restrictive. It, it, and it, it is already, and it's, it still seems, it, it's like, wait a minute. Could I not put up a sign that says no trespassing, beware of dog? I, I don't, I don't get it. I mean.
Well, that's not a, that would be a temporary sign.
Well, it even has restrictions on temporary signs. It specifically allows certain kinds of content of temporary signs,
Yeah.
and it doesn't list that, you know?
I think what's missing.
And why does it have to be temporary? It's gonna be long as, long as the dog's alive, right? I, I don't know, it, it seems.
Well, but then it's not a temporary sign.
I, I think what's missing, I think, dimension all.
That's right, then it's not a temporary sign, if you're putting that.
Yeah, and it has, you can put yard signs up and that's fine, but if it exceeds a certain size.
One town had for election, political signs, they had to be removed forty-eight hours after the election was over.
So there is a selected sign. I'm gonna go to fall under the exempted sign.
So on for the, the last business item, the warrant timeline, it's pretty much what we said last week. Nothing has really changed. We're looking to meet January seventh. Um, going through, trying to get every, everything true together on, on what our warrant articles are gonna be. We did discuss with town council how we would have these warrants, if we could have consent items. The MBTA one has to be a standalone one, the ADU has to be a standalone one, the sign one would have to be a standalone one. But we could have a, and, and, and a housekeeping one where we could list each item out, and you could ask people to vote on a consent, like right how, how they do the budget. They would go down and someone could call hold on an item, and then you can include the bulk of them and go back and discuss just that one particular item. That's, I think, what we're gonna be trying to put together.
Similar to the way when you've seen the warrant article with the capital budget and things, so. All right, any other, yes, hi, uh, Steph, did you have something?
Yeah, so the chapter three A is its own section, but ADU is kind of integrated throughout the bylaw.
Heather said we should still have that as a separate topic and separate bylaw because of it being, where we adopt the by right.
Right, so that, but, but it potentially has ripple effects through the different sections, right? So we just have to, um, be mindful of, I mean, the, every bylaw comes, every warrant article comes with a printout of the changes to the bylaw language. So we just, we have to be mindful about whether the base existing condition, if you will, of the bylaw. It's like the sequence of voting, right? If we approve the housekeeping one first, and then the ADU builds upon that, or if we approve the ADU first and the housekeeping builds upon that. Like, once something is approved, it becomes the base. So then the next thing to be voted upon would be building on that base, where, where the, where there are similar sections, right?
I tolerate.
So we need to think about the sequence of how we're voting.
Well.
I would think when we set the warrants out, that the warrant should, I guess, I don't know, my gut says do, uh, I mean, I, I, I guess in order to make sure that all works with the housekeeping, is that we do the big items first and the housekeeping after, so do the.
I was gonna suggest the other way, Addie Mae, because the big items are the ones that are more likely not to pass.
Right, but you can't vote a housekeeping one that, that alludes to your MOU, that you have the MOD, which we haven't even.
Doesn't exist yet.
It doesn't exist. So you have to be MOD first and the ADU first, and then we can do the housekeeping because we're referring back to them. If you don't pass, then you have to amend that.
You're still stuck with the end, they don't pass.
Right, no, then you meant the housekeeping.
Then the housekeeping will not be accurate.
Right.
So unless you have either or, you know, dependencies built into the housekeeping, which says, if it passes, it should be this, if it didn't pass, it should be that.
If it doesn't pass, then the way the housekeeping would be to set up this list of kind of consent agenda items, we would say, you know, one C and four A, we can't, we, we withdraw, so because.
So then you have to break it out.
Yeah.
Essentially, you say, this, these are the base case housekeeping, these are the housekeeping that are just dependent on a, a yes.
Steph, I don't know if you're able, I kind of did a rough version, or I, I don't know, I, I can't share, I'm not hooked in, but I don't know if I, did I send you that kind of rough Word doc that just showed a chart that was? You don't need to go through it now, it's, it's fine. I can share it, but basically, yes, everything would be its own line. Each little change would be its own line reference, so that if it didn't, if it was applicable only to three A or only to ADU, and something didn't pass, then we would just pull it. And then, yeah, can, do consent agenda on the remaining items.
It's not gonna be easy.
No.
Is that when we're all going on vacation? And we're all taking this for vacation? Uh, so, okay, so any other reports you have?
I'm hearing none.
I went to the MWR TA meeting this morning.
Oh, sorry.
Um, they're, you know, they're voting the budget. They, um, they're continuing uh, no fare on their fixed routes. I think you still have to pay if you're using the new, the service we started getting in Sherburne, the, the direct, whatever, the, the reserve service that comes to your door uh, for, only for disabled or sixty-five and over. Um, but the fare is totally nominal. It's like three dollars or something, or five dollars to go to the medical area.
That must be the bus they were talking about that went to Kendall.
Yeah.
No, that's a fixed route. I mean, it's the same, it, it's, it's the same transit people up on, in Framingham and Landon Street. But that's, um, they have, they have basically, they have all these different services, so they have fixed routes that, like in Framingham, they have various loop routes that run between town centers and shopping centers and stuff like that. There's none of them in Sherburne. There's, um, there's also a different type, which is just typically like once in a while, like sometimes even once a week, or once in the commuter hours, which is just a a town sometimes pay for, and Sherburne tried that years ago, and they didn't get enough ridership to make it worth our while. Then there's the, um, Direct Connect is the one where you can make a reservation,
Okay.
and you have to register with them as being, um, a senior or disabled. And then there's something called Catch Connect, which anybody can use, and only a few communities, I think Wellesley does that now, a couple of others do it. Um, so it's almost like calling a cab, and those are, um, the, you can do that, but it's, it's quite an expense to the community, so. Um, but I, I've dealt a bit with, um, council on aging, just to keep them apprised of this, and they're the people who, um, you go through if you want to register for this.
Okay.
And, uh, let's see if, they may start using it for like group trips and things too, I don't know. But, um, they're, uh, they're a big agency. I mean, they, this is, you know, it covers, I don't know, about eight towns around here. And, uh, their budget's like fifteen million dollars.
Oh, wow.
So, um, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a tiny fraction of the MBTA, but it's, it's.
I think they did get some funding from, um, MPO.
I'm sorry?
I think they got some funding from, from, uh, the, the, the MPO.
MPO, Massachusetts Metropolitan.
Planning organization.
Planning organization.
Um, I don't know, I, what I saw was that, um, they, they, they get a lot of federal and state money.
Right.
Often in eighty-twenty ratio. Um, but, um, our MBTA assessment basically ends up as a credit with them. So we pay thirty thousand dollars a year as a MBTA neighbor town. And, um, we basically have thirty thousand dollars of credit per year with them for using their service, which we're only using a fraction of that now.
Right, well, no other business, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Wrong second, that one.
Great, all in favor, Addie Mae Weiss is aye. Frank Hoek. Uh, Rob Bolz.
Aye.
James Garino.
Aye.
Steph Harrison. Aye, the meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-one PM on Tuesday, December seventeenth. Thank you, everyone.